To the Republic, we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we shall entertain roll call agenda.
Councilmember Hall?
Present.
Councilmember Mazzone?
Here.
Councilmember Parham?
Present.
Councilmember Cavallaro?
Here.
Mayor Alfini?
And I am here. We'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. If there's anybody out in the public that would wish to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, but is within our purview, we will listen. You have three minutes, and we can take no action today.
How I start public comment just last, but my name is...
Name and address, actually, first.
My name is Michael Webb. I live at 15823 Gallup Place. Moved in Fourth of July weekend as a retiree, developer in LA. And my question was, and I think they answered it, when will we give them the okay on the soil report so people can start building back their homes? And since I have three minutes, are they going to put the dirt back? Or are they going to require other people to have to put their own dirt in to get the elevation? I know that they're going to do utilities underground. It's going to take a little while. But to authorize people so they can get their plans and permits approved for the city of we to do housing over there. That's my main concern.
Tim, would you want to entertain that briefly?
Yeah. Mr. Webb, there's a lot of moving parts there.
Yes, it is.
And I did have a discussion with the OES director this morning in regards to that. Just real quickly, they're hoping to have everything done by February the second. And to answer your question, that's removing all the debris and scraping the soils. And they've still got some tests out that they're looking at if they have to go with another... Because they've gone six inches on pretty much all the lots.
Okay.
And then the builder, the homeowners are going to be required to do the backfill on the soils and compaction. That's the responsibility of the homeowners.
Okay.
But...
So, with that said, the monies that are pretty much allocated for each individual based on their lawsuits and stuff, they'll have to pay for their own dirt to be put back in and get the elevation?
I believe so.
Elevation?
I believe so, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. And another question was, I understand you guys do accept manufactured homes and still stick-built homes to be put back? And with the ADU, I think the average lot over there is only about forty-four hundred square feet. With a forty-four hundred square feet with the eighteen hundred square foot house, there's still room to put a garage in the back with units on the top. So, I was just wondering with this ADU requirement in Southern California, or in this case, all of California, will these people be able to put two units in the back of their property?
Two additional units?
Well, what, well, the house in the front, the unit in the back.
That sounds like a legal question.
The ADU law does have particular parameters, as you're aware of, so...
Well, the real reason I was asking is because that so-called alley, the turning radius to get in, if you were to... And one of the questions, I think, the city and the county was saying that they may redesign some of the lots because of the setbacks and stuff. So, I was looking primarily over here on the, is that north side of ninety-seven? Yeah, the north side of Sandy, west, oh, that's west side of ninety-seven. Most of those lots are like forty-four hundred square feet. So, there wouldn't be a problem with the size of the lot. It's just that in the back where there's this so-called little alley or little street there, the turning radius to get in is questionable. After looking at it, and the two of my engineers that we were just looking at some properties inside is... Three minutes is up.
The law will be coming shortly, no.
Anyway, those were the questions, you know, but we'll talk.
Yeah, we can talk later, and I can get with our building department, too.
John?
Yep, John.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We absolutely discussed some of that for you.
All right, all right.
There, and I would reiterate what I was on, in on a number of conversations this week.
Okay.
There's still a lot of moving parts.
Yes, yes.
So, as far as answering all your questions, I don't, I don't think we're quite ready for all of those yet.
Yeah, I mean, we're still...
There's too many moving parts.
It's a lot of moving parts, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your time, and glad to have come. I'll keep coming.
Come back, keep coming back.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Was no other public comment. We can, any questions with this guy had on the floor as far as, that this gentleman had regarding questions?
I don't have a question, I just a comment on, we, we need to start thinking like as this gentleman is breaking it down. You know, that's, he's, he's definitely knows a lot more than I know. And it's important that we get this information. We learn how, learn what you're, what you're talking about. Because what you're talking about is what everybody that wants to rebuild is concerned with. I mean, thinking that.
And we are starting to approach those questions this week.
We had three meetings this week.
Yeah, I know, but I...
Yeah, so, again, we're, from a layperson, we're still digesting that. I know I am. There are a lot of pieces. And I would say that it's just a work in progress right now. There, there still seems to be plenty of time as far as I saw. I'm not a survivor, so time is not probably the same for me as others. But it's just something that we'll all be working out, okay? But you're right, Bob. Without any other comments, I would like to get councilmember announcements, meetings, reports, and comments. We can start off to the right-hand side here, and we'll start with Mark.
Yeah, Councilman Mazzone? I have, I have a few things. I won't be real long on it. But one is I want to take my hat off and say thank you to the Police Department, Public Works, for the service that they were doing during this, these storms and the wind. We had a tree that came down over here on Gilman. And I talked to Jamie, whose house it was that it fell into. And she was absolutely thankful for Public Works getting there, moving that out of the way. Police Department for stopping traffic in the road and getting it done. I wasn't aware if the fire department was there or not. But I want to tell you guys thank you, and the Public Works for being out there during these storms and making sure when we had snow and ice, that everything was being taken care of. So, I've told people, hey, let, let these guys know that I watch it, I'm seeing it. So, you know, I want to tell you guys thank you. Two quick things. Chief Mayberry, this annual report, the way it's made up and everything, great job. And I know Roxy works hard at doing this, too, and your staff. It's very simple reading. It answers a lot of questions. I'm sure there'll be some. But this, this is a great report that I've seen. One last thing I do, nothing personal, but I'd like to have staff take a look at the fire department's budget from when they started in 2018 to present. And from 2018 back, five years, so a ten-year gap, just to get an idea, a comparison of where these, the funds and how the budget's grown or smaller, what we can do to improve it. So, it'd just be an idea to take a look at. And again, it's because of the budget is coming up, and I may not be done asking for more from different departments. But I'd like to know what the fire department can get, get a better understanding for myself, and maybe some questions that are being asked out in the public. So, that's all I have. But again, good job, everybody. I do appreciate it, and so does the, the city.
Thank you, Mark. We'll move on to Daryl, Councilman Parham.
Thank you.
I gotta get used to that.
Well, yeah, last night I was able to attend my first League of Local Agencies meeting. And we had a regular representation from the city staff and the council. It was very informative to see what was happening with other cities around the county and the county actions as well. I'll have a few more questions and things I'll be engaging with as a result of some of the presentations in, for the, for the city. But I think overall, there's a lot of, a lot of good coming up, a lot of potential employment opportunities coming up in the county, as well as support for, you know, housing and, you know, support services and things like that. So, it was very informative and very good to be there. I also want to, you know, echo Councilmember Mazzone in thanking, you know, the staff in general. You know, PD is always out there. We see them quite a bit in our neighborhood, as well as Public Works. But I see, you know, fire department out there, you know, working on abatement issues. And I see all the other staff support, especially with this bad weather. So, it's, it's great to see that not every city is as fortunate as we are to have such a good and dedicated staff.
Boy, there's a lot of accolades for staff today. Ah, darn it, that's good. Bob, would you like to do a quick report?
I don't have any report this month. No, thank you.
Councilwoman Su Cavallaro?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things. When Michael was speaking and we were talking about after, with the fire, one of the things from the last fire that we always said in our, in our committee meetings was that to remember that this should be a marathon, not a sprint. And if we don't, we want to take things slow to get things rebuilt. I know everybody's anxious. You want to get back in your houses and you want to get things built. But it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. And then I would also like to say, I went to Lola last night, and I'm glad that they got to go. It's, it's all the council members from the whole county. And everybody talks about what happens in their, in their local cities. And it's great information. It's very enjoyable, and I'm glad they went and got to like it. And then I want to say thank you to Martin and Diana for opening up the bowling alley again. That was one of the things last night that got a cheer from everybody in the county when Ken said that the bowling alley was opened up. And we'd like to think of it as ours, because it is ours, but the whole county appreciates it. And if any of you went down there for the two weeks that school was out, you could clearly see that everybody in the county appreciated it. And then I happened to go in there on the Monday, the first day the kids went back to school, and the whole place was packed again with different people that had, would not come in when it was crowded like that. So, I just, it makes me smile every time I go by, and there's a ton of cars parked out there, as much as the neighborhood parking lots don't necessarily appreciate it as much as I do. That's it.
I would like to probably echo just a little bit on to Sue regarding the Cedar Lanes. It was, it felt like a little bit of a revival of getting a little bit of life back into the, to the, and energy into the city. I've been down several times. It's, there's still a little bit of work in progress, but overall, it is really a great thing to have. Well-received by the community. I also went to Lola. I would tell you that we appointed Mark Mazzone onto the LaFco Committee. See what happens when you show up to a, to a dinner. And we also appointed Councilman Parham to the Sage Committee, which hasn't met, and they did state that it would, last time it was met. But I would tell you, they're incorrect.
Oh.
I met to a meeting, and I wasn't on the council in 2007. I got to think about that. So, I'm thinking it was right around 2012 that they met last. But it, but it was a committee that was supposed to, was designed originally to enjoin city and the county to work together, to get some projects done where, where we kind of coexist. So, it's, if they revive it, it might be a good thing. I also was involved with a couple meetings with a development group that kind of is supported by Roseburg. I wouldn't say that they're exactly hired by Roseburg, other than they are designed to assist us in the rebuild efforts. And I know that Tim had at least three or four meetings, probably. I know I was involved in two. But it had to deal with not only the redevelopment, but also the, or the restructuring of some of the property, which is still a work in progress. Had to do with the underground. It had to do with a number of things. And I think Tim can elaborate more at the end of the meeting. And after that, that's all I have today. And we can move on to the consent agenda. If everybody has read one, if there's anybody that wants to pull an item off the consent agenda?
No, I move to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion on the floor for approval of the consent agenda as written?
We do need public comment on, we do need to allow public comment on the consent agenda.
Is there any public comment on the public agenda? Nope. Seeing no public comment, then I will entertain a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Let's move on to, we're running, I better hold off. We're going a little too fast. Hold on. Wait a minute, does everybody take a break? Thirty seconds, it's okay. I think we had, we had to stretch the reports out, so. On to council business. The first item on the agenda is Item A, Building Department. Motion to adopt a resolution streamlining the project and permit process for the Mill Fire and related projects. Report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, before you tonight is a similar resolution that unfortunately you had to pass in 2014 after the Bowles Fire in order to streamline the process for projects and, and permits related to the Mill Fire. As you can see in your agenda, we're going to be asking you tonight to pass a resolution that still has everybody in conformance of the 2019 California building standards and all the other conformance that need to happen. But it also allows for the fees to be waived in relation to the permitting process and the tie-ins back into the utilities. That was, we briefly mentioned that earlier. So, that's, that's in essence what you'll be doing tonight. You will also be looking at as far as the, any sort of, if, if there's any sort of relief after, we put this, a, a three-year time limit on this. But that doesn't mean, you know, January 12, 2026, that nobody can streamline or anything. We're going to do this by case-by-case basis. So, if somebody, we do know that some of these properties could potentially be caught up in court with probate and other things, and those things sometimes can take months, if not years, to get handled by a court. And if that happens, we don't want to leave anybody behind that's still interested in, in building their home, or rebuilding their home. So, we will have that up there as well. We're also going to take into consideration the original footprints. Mr. Webb had brought that up earlier on some of these lot sizes. Right now, we are getting a quote on doing a complete survey of Lincoln Heights, which is going to be pretty exhaustive and pretty expensive. As you all know, it's anybody's ever done a survey here. So, but they did that for the Bowles Fire, and it's extremely helpful when it comes to lot lines. We know a lot of these homes have been there for over a hundred years. And as we discussed, you know, back in the sixties, you know, so-and-so, you know, Bill may have allowed his neighbor to build a fence four feet over from his lot line, and nobody cared, because, you know, Bill's a good guy or whoever. And we've got to get those established. So, when the builders do come in, we know where the actual lot lines are. And that's important for us, too, because there's some, as mentioned before, some of these lots are kind of irregular size and small, so they're going to have some challenges. This also takes into consideration that if a homeowner decides to build, I believe was it Sandy, five hundred feet more than the current footprint that they've, that they're assessed with right now, that we won't be waiving the fees in, in this if they want to expand and, and rebuild a larger home, which was, I think, the same standards that were set back in the Bowles Fire as well. So, is there anything I'm missing, Sandy, that you can think of?
That just stays in line with the school fees and the, and the assessor's office.
Yeah, that's it. I'm sorry, that, that, you're right. That lines up with that. And these fees are, are going to be waived also for any sort of repairs to buildings, which there weren't too many that survived the fire as well. So, we're, this is for the repair and the reconstruction of these homes.
No more? We still got a half hour or so?
We've got, I've got a presentation at the end of the meeting, but I'll stretch it out for you, okay?
Okay. Any questions from council? Mark? Councilman Parham?
No, very clear.
Yep.
Of course, I always have a couple. With the streamlining process, I would like to make sure that the owners of the property also are pretty much aware that they need to look at the footprint that has been established at, at the county. Because what we found during the Bowles Fire is that what was on the property and what was originally permitted were not necessarily the same. So, if people built an addition that wasn't permitted, or I would just, it's just a point of caution to check. That was something I remember specifically that came up. Are we, second question, or second statement would be setbacks. Are we going to waive any setbacks?
That was in here.
Was it in there?
Yeah, that was one of the things that was in here, because we did waive, my whole entire street got setbacks waived.
Did they? Okay. How, how about off-street parking? Any waivers on off-street parking?
The, it says the planning director shall be permitted to waive the requirement for a two-car garage. And the property did not have a garage prior, and the property owner can provide a minimum of two off-street parking spaces, so...
So, at least two off-street parking spaces have to be provided?
Yes.
Okay, because that was one of the issues with, I'm looking at the PD or fire department with access, if the content, it was, it was a fairly big practice over there, parking on both sides, which would limit, probably not the, an emergency vehicle such as a police car, but it would on a fire, fire engine.
I would point out that we're the ones that are going to deal with that as far as parking issues. We're dealing with it before the fire. And then that's where I would call into question the, the comment during public comment regarding ADUs and J-ADUs, junior units. Any additional residential on those properties are going to require additional vehicle parking. We already had very limited as it was. So, that, I'm just asking the city, the council, and building department to take that in consideration when making these waivers, so.
I would also probably, my, one of my comments is I do believe that having off-street parking is critical and actually having, you know, maybe if you don't have a two-car garage, a single-car garage would be also, would also benefit the neighborhood. I, I think it just kind of, it's an expected thing where years before, there wasn't necessarily a car requirement, because a lot of people, I know, when I grew up around my neighborhood in Mount Shasta, we had one car. We had a one-car garage. Most people had one-car garages. We've grown up since then with our vehicles, so we have two. I know, I think when I had teenagers, I think I had probably five in front of my house at one time. So, that becomes an issue.
And it will help, as you talked about with emergency vehicles, as well as snow removal, the street sweeping, those type of things, too.
So, is that something that we could look at a little bit more critically, or are we going to just...
Well, it, we can, we can also look at it from, like I said, a case-by-case basis as well, so.
Okay.
I'd just like to add, just a reminder to the council. Municipal code says no resident is allowed to park on any street during snow removal, anywhere in the city. We do run into that. We don't enforce that very strictly, because we can't find enough tow trucks during a snowstorm. But just a reminder, no one is allowed to park on the street during snow removal.
Right.
But I agree with Chief Mayberry on that, having some background with it. We need to pay attention to what he's saying and suggesting, and also for the fire. Those are pretty important to get vehicles in and out of it.
Street sweepers, another one, technically, I mean, it's just...
Definitely consider and look at your muni codes within the city and your, and your vehicle codes, too. Just to make sure we're, we're all on the same page.
Okay. All right, that's all the comments I have. With that said, we would look probably, unless anybody wants to bring this back to the drawing board, is that possible? I, I don't want to delay getting some things approved. That's one thing for sure I don't want to do. But I also want to make sure that, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot with this as well, so.
I mean, I, I'm, this is probably a question for the city attorney, but at some point, if there was an amendment that needed to be made to the streamlining process, it could be brought back before the body, couldn't it?
Yes, if we're adopting these by resolution, then, then the city council can amend them by resolution.
Resolution?
Yep.
Then I, the chair will introduce or entertain a motion.
Of course, I'm sure you...
Oh, we are. All right, fine. Public comment? Okay, he looks like he wants to say something, okay. Anybody wants to have public comment? You're welcome.
You gotta go to the microphone.
You might have more questions after all those comments, okay?
Well, when you talk about the fire department and stuff, we did a sixteen-unit apartment building, and we converted them to townhouses in LA County. We made sure that at least the fire truck can go in and turn around and come back out. So, when resetting the dimensions for the lots, we also considered the fact that with the easement, that they would take some of, and they did this a lot, some of the people's yard so that the truck could get in and out. So, when you redesign your setbacks, you allocate it to where if a person had, like in LA, most of the front yards were twenty feet, we'd buy a five thousand square foot lot, split it in half and do two twenty-five square foot lots. In that, we did a carport and a, and a one-car garage with a carport. We did five of those, and we did like ten sets. So, I'll, I'll bring pictures of all that the next time we come in sketches. But it's, it's very simple that their requirement has to be addressed. Without it, if you had a fire and he can't get to you, end of story. So, that's just a logistic piece, and I think that can be worked out by the next meeting so it'd be, you know, a standard plan for this is how it's going to go. Because the city has the responsibility to provide the safety. And if they can't get in there, they just can't get in there. So, when we were doing the townhouses, we had to reset our street and give up an easement off everybody's lot so that they can get in and turn around and come out. And that's a major piece.
Question for you, was that a brand, I mean, a new development or a, a rebuild?
Well, it was both. It was a new development, because, you know, there's no more land really in LA County. And then we would buy a block of houses, tear them down. They were a minimum five thousand square foot lots. So, in order, the city had a program where they funded ninety-five percent of the development for the builders. This is in the '08 and '09 series of life, you know, 2008, 2009. So, we had a company that came in, they bought the lots, eminent domain, the city bought the lots. They redesigned it, and then when they were doing it, they realized a lot of these old homes, they did, they were so close, they reset the lot, the lot line. So, all I'm saying is, this that they're talking about can be easily worked out once everybody addresses what has to be done. You can't build it without it, because then if you call the fire department, he can't get into your lot. That's what I was saying about that alley in the back for that, that driveway.
And I thank you, because that's actually one of the things that we discussed at the meetings this past week was getting those explanations out to the survivors so that they are fully aware of those little things like that.
The mandates, yes, the mandates.
That all have to be mitigated a little bit.
Right, right.
And actually trying to provide a vision for the neighborhood to kind of adhere to.
There was one thing that you mentioned earlier, and we found that out. And a lot of the cities are making people upgrade their homes now. I just took care of a problem for a young lady. Her house was built in 1936, and he had added another bedroom and a bath, but it wasn't on the original plans and maps. So, of course, they wanted him to tear it down. But they did find it. It was put together in, I think, 1969. But they hadn't found that permit. So, they were going to make them tear down the extra bedroom and bath that they added. So, like you were saying, go back to the county, whatever the county said it was. And then that gives people time, well, they can't find the paperwork now, because the houses are burned down. But to find out who built it and was it legal at that time. So, anything that was illegally built has to go. I mean, we're, we're doing things legally now, you know, and like I said, neighbors and whatever.
That's why I wanted to make it a point, because I, we, on our prior fire, we had that issue.
Came up a lot, didn't it?
It had to do with, with California has a new thing, if you're over five hundred square feet, you have school taxes to pay. You have a lot of little things that kind of start jumping out.
Any additional besides what was already there from the original footprint, which makes sense, you know?
You like our buzzer? Apparently it is.
Mr. Webb?
Point well taken.
Could you leave your phone number with me, drop it off before you leave, please?
Well, just, just as of Friday, T-Mobile is not sharing the Verizon antennas up here anymore. So, I've got a T-Mobile line, and I've got a Verizon line. So, the cards I've been giving out was the T-Mobile line, but I just gave out the number with the Verizon line. So, the Verizon is... So I've got a T-Mobile line and I've got a Verizon line. So the cards I've been giving out was the T-Mobile line, but I just gave out the number with the Verizon line. So the Verizon is working up here now.
Okay, makes sense. Like top two. Thank you.
Okay, uh now that we've had public comment, we're still the motion on the floor. Did we get a motion?
No, we haven't. Uh I'll, I'll move to um adopt resolution number zero-one-two-zero-two-three.
Zero-two.
Zero-two. Oh yeah. A resolution of the City of Weave's streamlining projects and permit processing for mill-fire-related projects.
I'll second that.
Do we need a amendment on that or we can come back to do an amendment?
We can come back and make an amendment.
We have the option, yeah, okay.
Come back. There's a motion on the floor regarding the streamlining project and permit process for the mill-fire-related project. With enough public comment, we'll all vote, would I hear a vote of a or nay? Who votes in favor?
I vote in favor.
A.
A.
A. I like that word.
You like that?
Yeah, I'll vote A too. And no nays. Okay, on to item B, Oversight Committee. We need uh approval nominees for the Measure O Sales Tax Citizen Advisory Committee. Uh we have five nominees. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, at the meeting, I believe it was back in um, was Trump, yeah, December, uh, we had talked about forming this, we formalized this and uh it was, it was passed unanimously to form it. We had uh given a task to council to come back with names for their appointments for, or their nominations for the Measure O Citizen Advisory Committee, which is an advisory committee that will be looking after the one-quarter cent sales tax that was passed, I believe, in two thousand fifteen by the citizens of Weed. That has, it's not necessarily earmarked, but was passed to assist certain entities with the resource center, the seniors, the library, uh public works, public safety. So this advisory committee will be set in place and this is the perfect time to set it in place cuz we've already started the budget process to meet and discuss both the expenses, the income, the previous allocations and bring back a report to council before the uh budget is adopted as to the next two years of how much allocations based on the projected revenue that's gonna happen over the next two years.
Okay.
And so you have before you tonight, the names of Ron Dickens, Alan Shoemaker, Jim Taylor, Brian Palmer, and Melissa Westine.
Okay. Any questions from council? You guys shouldn't have questions. You guys wanna put your names. Any public comment? Okay, I would like just a point of clarification that the quarter percent sales tax is for senior services and library and general fund purposes is kind of what it was designed to do. Okay.
Yes.
So if there's no objections to these nominees, we'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the Oversight Committee on B.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Looks like they have new jobs. Send them a letter.
I will.
They, I, I would say one thing is that they were all pretty, at least the ones I called were pretty enthused about things, so.
Good.
They were, they were glad to help. Um, the next item on the agenda is on item nine, discussion item only. Uh, the item is Monument Digital Signage. Uh, it's reg, brought to the, it's been brought to the attention of the council and our citizens that are, we have a lack of communication. That lack of communication has been brought because our newspapers are almost non-existent. Uh, so forms of communication around the city about getting messages and, and meetings out has been very limited. And so it's, this is why it's been brought up. So, Tim?
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and get started with the PowerPoint. And yeah, it's been brought up by uh multiple members of the council and trying to get the word out. So um this is our, go to the next slide, Jeremy. This is our current ordinance, eighteen point two-four-point-two-three-four, prohibited signs. And it talks about lights. Uh, and I believe this was passed, I think, in two thousand thirteen, was it, David? I believe the ordinance. And essentially, yeah, essentially, it kind of banned any sort of digital signs that had red, green, or amber lights that could be confused with traffic signals, uh, which if, you know, design located in a manner that could cause the drivers to become disoriented as far as, you know, what, what's going on on that street. And I believe I talked to Chief Mayberry, at one point, we had a digital sign out on the boulevard that was, I don't know if that was brought in because of this or I mean, is there any history between that particular sign and this ordinance? No, it was just a business that actually utilized a digital sign for one of the, one of the first businesses. Uh, they were in compliance, but I, by being in compliance, the primary color was white and it was so bright, it actually was a distraction on the boulevard. So cuz it's not necessarily the color, it's, it's brightness and lumens, I think. Yeah. And technology with LED signs has changed immensely over the last, especially the last ten years. And so that's where we are with our current ordinance and the discussion was in reference to what could we do as a city, as Mayor Palafini stated, in getting the word out for different community events. You know, ballgames, things that are going on at COS, things that are going on with the council, things that are going on with nonprofits, carnivally, the different things that we, you know, traditions that we have here and getting the word out to remind folks. And if you can go to the next slide. Um, so
Perfect.
We, I don't even think we have a monument sign here in, in Weed, but with, with the digital uh LED sign. But these are freestanding signs. They provide, you know, they're low-profile with the ground with really not a whole lot of open space. They can be customized for a, a government entity, a business, a church, whatever, to, to be able to position these in a, in a, in a manner to where they can be read, you know, near streets and entrances. So we go to the next sign, next slide. The benefits, and I kinda threw up there some examples of some different types of digital monument signs. Uh, e- everything from, you know, a university to a utility district to a elementary school to a church. The benefits of these is cuz you get a great deal of visibility. And we'll talk about that a little bit later as far as like some key locations within a community that might be beneficial for us to place some monument signs. Lots of visibilities, you can match existing architecture. So if, for example, if we wanted to put a sign in front of city hall, we could kinda conform it to where it doesn't stand out like a sore thumb cuz it looks totally different from the city. Durability, they've built these now to where they are very weather-resistant and can endure, hopefully.
Eighty mile-narrow winds.
Hopefully eighty mile-narrow winds. Um, and you can maximize your marketing because these can be, you're reaching folks twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And as was stated earlier, unfortunately, the newspaper business is, is no longer there. Um, those of you know Pete Hillian, who was the the guy who's kind of been the liaison with Rosenberg and the city, Pete had it, his, his background is public relations, but it's also running newspaper. Pete was the editor for the San Jose Mercury. And when he was there twenty years ago, they had about six hundred employees in the newsroom. They have forty employees now at, at the San Jose Mercury. The frustrations we've had here locally with the Weed press, I can tell you, uh, this is the first time in my career, I have a little bit of a background in journalism and communication, so I can crank out a press release pretty quick. And I got very frustrated when I first got here because the press releases and the photos and the things I was sending to the paper, we're not even getting into the paper. And as we discussed earlier, yesterday's edition, the front page was how Kevin McCarthy was still struggling to become the next Speaker of the House. That was on the front page of the Weed press yesterday. And I would say about ninety-five percent of the entire paper was national news, no local news. It's kind of a, a sad statement. Because it's hard for the advertisers too, because people open up the paper, when Mayor Green was sworn in last year, I sent them a, a bio, an article, pictures, didn't make it to the paper. And then I called, complained, the next time the paper came out, she was on page thirteen in the corner. This is the Weed press, but there were all kinds of stories about Mount Shasta and Waireka. And uh she got shoved to the back of page thirteen. So you're right, we're not getting the message out for our community that we should be. So we go to the next slide. Is there one before that, Jer? Yeah, here we go. So, looking at the average cost of a, of a monument sign, I should preface this in saying, i- i- it's fifteen thousand dollars in hire if we decided to, to do one ourself. And that is bare bones. That's not gonna be like the one you see up at the top up there. That, I mean, that's bare bones of just basic pylon with a, with a sign on it. So you have to decide at some point, if you wanna put one of these in, do you want it one-sided? Do you want it two-sided? Do you want it layered? And layered meaning that, like you see the one up there where they have the address at the bottom, the LED screen, and then the top of it, you know, would, would say the City of Weed if we chose to, to do something like that. So that's an option as well. We go to the next slide. And then the mounting options, uh, there's a lot of them. You can do them, but with a wall mount, a pole mount, that pedestal mount, as we discussed earlier. I, I did see on some of the pages that a basic eight-foot by five-foot digital sign, i- i- that, that thing right there will run you about, for one side, will run you about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and then when you add in some sort of uh brick mount or columns or some fancy, like we saw on the previous slide, then the prices just continue to climb, depending on what you want out of it. I mean, you have to have something that's going to look aesthetically pleasing as well as, like we talked before, handle all the extreme weather that we kinda have every once in a while here. Um, so that, those are the things that we have to look at as well. Go to the next slide. Um, another thing we could do is partnership. There are some companies out there that essentially will come in and um help and assist the city in putting a sign out or multiple signs out. And how they do, they're not doing it out of the goodness of their own heart. They're doing it because they want to make money from advertising. And LED billboards are becoming very popular these days and getting the messages out for advertisers. So what they would do is, they would come in and in exchange for any sort of rent or lease on a piece of ground for us to put the, the thing, they would pay us a percentage of the advertising that they receive from that. Now, and I had talked to our uh city attorney prior to the meeting, that can open up a little bit of a can of worms, the fact that that means anybody could advertise essentially on there. And so unless we put some sort of parameters, and I don't know how much that would hold up, so David seems to think, not, not too much. But we would work with the design team and build something completely unique to meet the character of our town. And, and I think that would be a nice thing. Whether we go, if we decide, the council decides to do this, whether if we go with a company, a partner with a company to do this, or we decide to do it ourself, I think we need to make it unique. I don't think we need to just, you know, slap something together and, 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 because it's cheap. And uh the other good thing about having a partner with this is they're responsible for the upkeep, they're responsible for, you know, the ads. What we would do, and I talked to a gentleman who did this, and I'm not here pitching his thing tonight, I purposely left his information off of this. Um, he would, we would upload things to him via email. So if, you know, like I said, we wanted to advertise carnivally or, or, or some of these other community functions that we have, it would be, you know, our responsibility to give him the information and his responsibility to take the information down. And uh so those are the type of things that are, i- it's kind of nice so we don't have to have a staff member constantly involved in doing all that, which, I mean, I don't think it would be a whole lot of work for Sandy to do, but.
Right, right. I see tire treads.
So, but anyway, it, it's something that we, well, you do the websites, you might as well do this. So anyway, this is something that, you know, is a uh, could be a boost also to some of our local businesses, our local restaurants, the, you know, we talked about the bowling alley, those type of things too. If we partnered and allow them to advertise on this as well. So that, that, that's something that we would have to take a look at. And, I mean, other cities have done this, they have partnered with private sector companies in providing these digital uh billboards out there. It's definitely, as far as, you know, any sort of capital outlay, uh, an easy, a much easier way of doing it, but and it also provides revenue back to the city as well cuz we get a percentage of the advertising. So, go to the next slide. These are just some examples of what some other cities have, have done throughout uh the state. And some of them, you know, are much bigger than others. Some of these, I think, are prototypes, but we go to the next slide. Um, I mean, i- it, you know, some of these are gonna be for right off the, you know, major thoroughfares and freeways and, and, and those type of things. So, but it's something that I feel like it's been brought up and you hit it on the head. We're not getting the word out like we should as far as this goes. And not everybody is on social media, not everybody is, you know, tuned in to, you know, the multiple groups and websites of, of knowing everything that's going on. This could be a bridge to get that information out there. So, I mean, I was thinking about that earlier. We have a couple um spots open on the Planning Commission. I mean, this would be perfect. Uh, you know, since Daryl and Mark are now council members and off the Planning Commission, you know, advertising for that. Uh, you know, put a phone number or, or, or some sort of a contact for those who might be, you know, wanting to be involved on the Planning Commission. So that, that's something. I can go to the next one. This is a little quote uh from Walt Disney. He says, "The way to get started is to quit talking and begin doing." And uh I kinda threw that in there as a, uh, you know, we, we can talk about it and talk about it and talk about it, but eventually, if we wanna get something done with the upcoming budget, if it's something that this council desires to do with this upcoming budget, we need to talk about it pretty soon because that's a, it's gonna be a pretty substantial capital outlay. Um, and to answer the questions somebody had asked about positioning the signs and where we would put them, if we partnered with this company, again, we would be putting them on city easement, city land and uh basically charging them a ground lease essentially in exchange for them to be there. And so, a- a- and like I said, we could do it ourselves as well. Go to the next slide. So does anybody have any questions?
How many are you talking about or thinking about?
I'm thinking two. I think one on the south side and one close to downtown. Um, somebody had mentioned, a lot of cities now are putting them in front of city halls to, um, Chief Mayberry and I talked about, you know, someplace safe to where, you know, uh, folks won't hit them. Um
There's a one coming off of ninety-seven too, has that little plaza that's there.
There, there's.
So could you use these though for like an emergency if there's
Absolutely, sure.
Close or you have a camera alert or something, so they, with the person, if we go in partners, we'd have to download it to them to have them do it or?
Or that, or he may give us access to it as well. I mean, for, I, I would assume for emergency purposes, Councilmember Mazzoni, that would be the ideal situation for us to be able, with Roxanne or somebody and, and, and dispatch, somebody to get the, get the information out there quickly. Like you just said, if a highway is getting closed down uh due to weather conditions or something, or chains are being required, be great for us to be able to pop that up there. And I'm sure Chief would agree, both chiefs would agree, it'd be nice. And during these events to be able to, to do that. So just to be able to redirect traffic and those type of things, so.
Yeah, I like it.
Yep.
I think this is interesting because not only does this potentially solve the information gap to the community, but this also gives local businesses a chance to advertise, A, to help us with the cost of uh providing this, this service and maintaining it. But also if someone is coming off of ninety-seven or off of the Interstate Five, they may, might not be aware of the things that Weed offers, um, as far as, you know, restaurants and activities and things. So this could be beneficial to the general plan as well as for information. And, and again, for emergencies, I think, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of potential birds with one stone here, on one sign, so to speak.
And Councilmember Barham, I, I, I've talked to numerous people and uh, and just asked them, how did you get to Weed? You know, the people that weren't born and raised here. And a lot of them have said, like you just said, they pulled off the interstate one day, kinda started
You found it.
Found it, exactly. And they started driving around and Found it, exactly. And they started driving around and decided, hey, this is kind of a cool, cool little place. And that's how they found it. And I think we could even track more if they were able to see, you know, community events and those type of things going on as well. So, uh, I mean, that's going to be an automatic pool. And al- also, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we would probably work in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce too, of course, because they're kind of the ones that are out promoting those events as well and, and getting that information from them too. So, but, questions?
Tim, in two, early two thousand fourteen, we started, we started this process. And the college was, wanted to be involved in, the high school wanted to be involved in, the elementary school wanted to be involved in. But as you're talking here now, do you think, do you think it's better to have one entity or should we be thinking about bringing them into?
That, that's up to the, uh, you know, the privy of the council. If, if, if they wanted to, you know, partner with those entities. If, if it was going to be a situation to where we were going to be taking on the, you know, the initial capital outlay to build one of these, it might be in our best interest to partner with them, you know? These, they make these monument signs and pylons where if we wanted to add the school district or add the college on there as well. I mean, those are, those are great questions too.
I'll, I'll, I'll come down next week and we'll, I'll talk to you about maybe trying to, uh, reinvigorate that, that concern.
There, there's advantage, as Councilman Parham said, as far as promoting businesses and those type of things. But the downside is, I can see certain, uh, businesses that some folks may be quite frankly offended by seeing advertised on a city billboard. You used to, I'm sorry, if we partnered and did it ourself, we would have complete control over that. So, I mean, that's, that's one thing. I, I like a little, there's a part of me that really likes having somebody else take care of it. Um, but when you have somebody else taking care of it, you're also giving them full control over, uh, over everything. So that's something to consider as well. You like control?
Not used to.
I know. If anybody didn't know that.
I, I, I would say there's, there's some advantages, just like you're saying, to having another entity do that. Because I would like to see what their proposals potentially might be as far as there is a benefit for revenue. There, with the benefit of revenue, there's the benefit, there's the downside of loss of control. The benefit of them putting, posting things is also a benefit because that takes away from having people do it. Because what I envision is potentially, if we don't get the proper posting, then it's going to go the way of the newspaper. Uh, I, I like control though, because I do believe we can get enough stakeholders to come on board. I believe the college is in dire need.
Sure.
Uh, it's my opinion. I hope I'm not offending anybody out there, but that's watching publicly, but I believe there's basketball games, there's football games, there's the theater, there are events that go on, much less when school is open.
The rec districts.
The rec districts events, the council, uh, events, the, just the events in our city. And if we can overcome the costs with the partnering of some of these stakeholders.
And maybe there might be some opportunities, not necessarily by selling ads, but sponsorships as well. I mean, that may be a way of figuring a way to, to, to do it as well. I mean, I mean, it's something to think about too. So, I mean, some business, some local businesses, they sponsor stuff with the chamber all the time. I see, um, there's a company that goes around and puts the, uh, sports posters, you know, the basket, the girls' basketball, I see them all over the place. And they sell ads at the bottom of them and they post these all over town. So I mean, the, the schedules for, for the, for the season. I mean, that may be something we could, we could look at as well. And not necessarily get into the advertising business, but maybe the sponsorship business. I mean, that, that could be something we could look at as well.
Do, do we have city-owned property that we could put it on?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We, we, we've got lots of easements and places we can, we can put it.
That it, are they on anywhere that's going to conflict with Caltrans? Because sometimes they can be.
The, the two that I, I had thought of, uh, no, they wouldn't conflict with Caltrans.
The, the one at the interchange would be in conflict.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a definite.
Off of ninety-seven, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. One, it's. And plus it's in the middle of lights.
What, welcome sign?
So you've got stop and go. And I think one of the things that digital signs were, these original limitations we saw on here was because of putting signs close to stop and go and then having an issue.
And the other thing that, and I, and I visited with this gentleman that owns the, the sign company and he says, you know, you could even set the, uh, lumens at a certain thing. So if it's close, so if we put one here in front of city hall, we can have it on a timer to where the lumens go down a great deal at night. So you're not flashing the residents and, 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 you know.
Just like my.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one right by Scott Valley Bank as well. That is a perfect location. And the other thing is all we need is a one-sided in these.
Most of these, yeah. I think the only one we need a two-sided would be probably in front of city hall if we did one here, which we get a ton of traffic back and forth. I mean, a ton.
The ton of traffic is right here at the T.
Yeah.
Going, that is, because there used to be a sign when I first moved here, there was, the school had a sign there.
If somebody was to donate some property.
Yeah, I mean, we can, that, that would be something we could look at too. If a business or, or a resident wanted to donate a piece of property for this, heck yeah. I mean, we could, we could look at that as well. So, I mean, you just got to be strategic and, and, and doing it and, and placing it and, but I think with the technology, the way it is today, it's something that's definitely, uh, doable.
Following up on, on Walt Disney's comment, uh, getting started here. You have a company now. I, I talked to a company today too. Their, they have some salesmen who are supposed to be getting back to me. To have somebody come in, you know, to have a, a company come in and give us a presentation, this is what we could do.
Sure.
Could we, you know, the, the, and, and, and I don't know, would we want to have two companies come in and?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's going to be, if, if the city decides to do it, there's probably, depending on, I, I, I would say if we did a couple of them, we're definitely going to go past that twenty-five thousand threshold. So we're going to need, uh, RFPs and presentations.
Before we do that, if we know what we, you know, rather than trying to create something out of there, have somebody come in, try to say, well, this is what I would, what I
Sure.
present to the, to the community. And, and, uh, I think that then we can, if we go to other entities, we say, okay, we know what we want, we have, this is, this is what we have. If we go right now, and that's what we did before, it's like, yeah, we want to do this and yeah, you're into it, but we don't know what it costs. We don't know what to look, you know?
Yeah. No, no, we can, we can definitely delve into that.
I'll come back next week.
And design, there, the, one of the things that I saw through this little presentation you had was there are designs that actually could work here. The ones that kind of stick up with an arm, I'm not really attracted to very much. Having them off the ground though, because occasionally we do get snow. Is, you don't need to go that high, but there was, there was one monument sign in there that was, appeared to be probably four foot, five foot above everything. And then it had stuff in case.
I mean, that's the great thing about these. They have them now to where, like I said, they can, you tell them what you want and they'll design it to your specs.
And one of the things, I was, went down, I was meeting, I have lunch every once in a while at Grand Zella's with my daughter. So we meet halfway. And city of Williams put one in right, and I think it must be right in front of their city hall, but I might've been offset from it. But that's kind of, I was looking and going, well, actually it was attractive and it was in there actually. So I don't know.
And, and a previous city I was at, we did, we put two of them actually, one right in front of city hall. We had a huge complex and we put one on the corner as well. The problem with, but that was like fifteen years ago and we used the old, uh, the old digital style, which didn't give you a whole lot of flexibility when it came to, like you see today's LED technology. It was just the old, I guess you could, was it?
Tape.
Dot matrix, I guess you could say. That's pretty much what it looked like. Yeah. It just did the scrolling, da, 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 da. And but, so my deal was if you're driving by and you're going like, football game, by the time you get by, you've already missed it.
You gotta take a loop and come around.
When is the football game waiting for it? Uh, but then you like, you know, you put time and temperature on those things. So, I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do to these. So.
Mary's not taking as many phone calls anymore, so she would have time.
Maybe.
But if we had other entities too, you've got the college too. The, the college could possibly run a, a, a program off of, or, you know, a small program as far as teaching.
Yeah.
I think COS would be interested, even in the conversations we were having with Sharria last night, was one of the things was they could need a little bit of a shot themselves. One, they're lacking employees. Just getting employees, you can actually even put an employment bulletin.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah. There's, 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 yeah, it really is. And, and it's nice, the fact that I think the average one is like seven or eight seconds. So, I mean, you can, you know, but, and if you're like me, you know, throughout the day, you're, you're driving around and you're going to hit and see different ones coming, you know, to and from.
And the big thing is we're going to get people to start talking about it.
Yeah.
I mean, oh, you know, the common in, in our, this community is the common thing is, God, I didn't know that. It already happened.
Yeah. I, I get that too.
I, I didn't know that.
Even if COS has some great basketball games, enough, I mean, if you've been one, there's probably fifty people. That's great, great stuff.
So would you put that on an agenda item?
Well, well, probably what I'll do, Councilmember Mazzoni, is explore a little bit more in-depth with the company that, or companies that can partner with the city. And then I'll also do some exploring as to what it would take for us to do it ourselves. And then we can start looking at that. And then, and if that's going to be a, you know, a, a, a capital outlay, we'll talk about that during our budget process. If, if it's not, if it's, if it's a decision with the council to just partner with a, 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 a sign company to do it for us, then that could probably be done in a couple of months, but it's going to take a little bit of time to, to get that done. So. Oh, yeah. And, and the ordinance itself, uh, David's taken a look at it and we would, uh, yeah, that, that's a great point.
So the, I mean, the, the issue is the ordinance that was flashed up at the beginning. So if, to the extent that, you know, the third, there's a third-party business that was going to be advertising and wanted to use red or green or amber, that would require an amendment to our development code. So that's, you know, that goes to the planning commission.
Yeah.
I would also think if we start looking at this, it does open up the door for potentially others using this same type of signage. Uh, I don't know if we could restrict any of that. I don't think, I don't even think it's possible to restrict it like that, but I, I would like to be able to.
Our sign ordinance exempts signs that are erected by or under the authority of any governmental entity, whether local, state or federal.
I like that. That one we want to keep.
So we, I wouldn't recommend changing that.
No.
Okay.
But if we wanted to partner with a business who, in an exchange for the capital to build the sign, they want to advertise on the sign, then that would require an ordinance amendment, which has to be applied to everyone equally. So we can exempt ourselves, but once we let in one business, we've got to let everybody use a digital sign with red and green.
When you say letting them in, are you saying advertising on, on the display itself or on the monument?
No, I just mean they could build their own digital signs with those colors that are otherwise.
Well, and it wouldn't matter where it was, could they build?
Well, no, our sign ordinance regulates, you know.
Neighborhoods. It, so somebody can't put it, one across the Ken's house.
Right.
We, we could put something and they all have to be auto dimming as well. I mean, because even if one popped up, I certainly.
Which is what I understand from the chief is the regulations.
But I wouldn't have wanted that sign right next to my window, uh, as I was trying to sleep.
The city can all, the city's regu- sign regulations are, you know, they're, it's all governed by the First Amendment. So we can't make, except for there may be some more wiggle room when it comes to a commercial sign. But generally the only regulations that we can impose are time, place and manner, you know? So we've got size restrictions. We've got, you know, rules about off-premises signs that you, those are banned, for example.
Be like the city owns it, right? The, I'm saying if we didn't partner or somehow.
We would own it.
We, we would own it. Well, then it would fall under.
The exemption.
Exemption, yeah. Then it wouldn't be open for everybody to put one in.
Because I, what David said, he's absolutely right. Someone goes, hey, put my own sign up now. So, yeah, however we need, but it's a great idea.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess the council's decision here, if I don't see any objections, is to have the, uh, to ask you go take a look and get some more information.
I can do that.
Okay. Oh, public, I need public comment. He always reminds me, I forget you guys. You guys are looking at me the whole time, right? I can see you guys with that question on your face. Oh, you have to go to the, I've been instructed, you have to go to the podium. I'm always getting instructed.
Well, in Inglewood, they, um, were objecting about different signs because of the size, the brightness and things like that. But, you know, these two guys right here are going to lay out the, um, blueprint in which if anyone wanted to participate in what the city owns or what the city has. One thing I would like to say is you should, you should open it up for competition for those people who makes the signs, who's going to bid to get your business, because they're going to make business.
We will.
And, and a lot of the rulers, I mean, that's all they do is advertise. So, you, you know, you got a good income there, you know, you just got to work it to your advantage and take control of it, you know?
That would be a conflict of interest for me. So I'm married to one.
As it got closer to zero, I was going to give you that, it's going to beep. It's a bit up here.
It's up here on the screen. But I will bring back, uh, something next month, a little bit more in-depth, uh, maybe in, in between David and I talking about, with the, in regards to the ordinance to maybe, uh, draft something up between now and then as well.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, even if the councilmen on their, council people on their own, if they know of anybody, I don't see any damage in asking, like, I know the city of Williams has one. I'm sure they're out there all over the place, but, uh, so you can see what they do.
Yeah.
I mean, and how it's, and how has it worked?
Yeah, the company that sent over the, just the basic information, they had one page of all these cities that do that. And there's like thirty or forty in California. So anyway, but it's, it's, it, it's a different way of getting that message out, as we say, because not everybody's on social media, not everybody's reading the paper.
I mean, how many times we go by, I, I think about Friday night football and it's about nine-thirty and going, ah, guess I missed that. Anyway. All right. Any other business before the floor? Staff reports. That's for us. Let's start off with Steve, Chief Duncan. Okay. And Assistant Chris, Public Works Assistant.
Just like to say thank you for recognizing the staff, um, the hard work that the crew's been putting in this past week.
Thank you.
I'd like to also say that I didn't see any flooded streets. That was pretty good. I can't say that everywhere that I've been. So.
And they saved Sandy. Thanks for saving Sandy. From being swished by a tree.
Officer May, uh, Chief Mayberry.
Uh, just wanted to point out that we provided our annual report to you, hard copy. We'll have, uh, a digital copy to go out to the department heads. We're just trying to save paper. But, um, uh, you know, I do proofread this and I, I ask my, uh, department heads or my, my department heads, uh, to, uh, contribute and I, I try to scrutinize it before it goes out. But I, I'll, I'll point out one thing because I, I don't, it severely underscores what they do. On page eight, the, uh, animal calls for service, uh, I'm not sure what, our system has ways to look up certain data. I'm not sure how they did it. I, I was doing a report today, a different report unrelated and happened to notice a discrepancy. Twenty-twenty-two says four hundred and fifty-three animal-related incidents. We actually had six hundred and fifty-four. So, um, our animal control officers do a very good job and, and you don't realize how much time that actually consumes in their daily activity. Um, and it, and it extends on to the weekend. So just wanted to point that out. It was actually six hundred and fifty-four incidents.
Could I add something though? This, this, you can find this for the public that's out there, uh, maybe watching. You can find this on the website for the city of Weed, correct? Under the police department?
The city, well, we can put it on the police department website, but I believe the city clerk was going to post it, um.
Yeah, after the meeting.
So that you can look at that yourselves if anyone's interested in that.
Yeah, a, a couple of comments on that report from the PD. Um, one, I've seen a lot of, um, public discourse from neighboring communities about issues with animal control problems, um, that are not the city of Weed. So the fact that you guys are on top of that, um, is really, you know, big because all the complaints come from other neighborhoods, not from our city. Um, so that, that's great work. other neighborhoods, not from our city, so that's great work there. For me, I was not aware of the You Are Not Alone protocols that your department is handling, and that was really impressive to me, not just that we provide that service to our community, but the number of engagements for that. That was really impressive, and so, I appreciate the report, again, because I learned something new, and to see that we're doing even more for the city than even I was aware of, that speaks volumes, so.
How many of those You Are Not Alone calls do they make every morning?
Unfortunately, it fluctuates.
10, 20, 30?
It's around 10, I would say, is a good average. And it goes beyond that. I know I have had staff that, you know, it becomes, my dispatchers become friends with those people, they speak to them every day, they know what's going on in their lives, they've, you know, the officers go over and sometimes and do minor technical fixes for phones and whatever electronics may be having an issue, it's nothing, nothing electrical, but we, you know, technology can be kind of tricky to some people, and we go over and help out with that things. So, it goes beyond just a phone call, it's personal contact and relationships are built, and, you know, that also sometimes ends, you know, and when the relationship ends, yeah, people have to deal with that too, but it does take a toll.
When you called me?
Good. It can actually create good bonds with our people in the city. I think that having bonds with the Police Department is a good thing.
Sure.
So, very good. Sandra, report.
Just as the City Manager hit on, there are two open seats for the Planning Commission, so if you guys know of anyone who might be interested, please have them submit a letter of interest to City Hall. I do have, both seats can be filled with either citizens within the city limits, or one seat is open to the sphere of influence.
Okay.
Okay, and that does not include Shastina.
Yes, how about builders? Do we have any builders on our Planning Commission right now?
No. Well, I do have, I mean, I have a, I have an electrician, but no real contractor, no. That's all.
David.
No report.
That was a short report. Listen, it's only six foot, oh, we are extending. All right, quicken up now.
I'm sorry.
Just kidding you.
Yeah, I would like to also, like I said, pay accolades to the chief. I was asking a couple of days ago, we were talking about citizen complaints, and I asked the chief how many we had last year, and do you remember?
Don't want to jinx it, but we had, we had one complaint for the entire year, official complaint.
Which is amazing. I've been doing this for 22 years, when he told me that, my mouth dropped.
I will attribute that partially to my officers, but I will also say that I do fully support body cameras, because they allow me to see a lot of what's occurring. And it actually caused, when we got the body cameras after 20, I think it was 2014, 2015, when those were implemented, I did see a significant, back then when I was a supervisor, a significant decrease in the number of complaints. I can actually say I was on calls, and I see people, as soon as we got them, talking to me, and they would, and one call in particular was a crime investigation, is that they were going to change their story, they were a victim. Is that the camera? Yep, that was it. So, I do, I do fully support body cameras, and I contribute that this past year, partially to that, but I also, I have a good staff too, so.
Yeah.
And as far as the, the night of the mill fire, I was also just amazed at how many animals that were brought in, that were distressed from the fire, that had ran from their things, and I was like, thank God my wife's not here, because she'd want to take every single one of them, or Sue, they don't want to take every single animal regardless.
They'd have been all in, Council Chair.
So, I just wanted quickly, Mayor Palfini had alluded to some meetings, I just wanted to go quickly over some of the highlights. We did have a meeting on Tuesday. As he stated before, we have been in good communications with Roseburg. I cannot stress enough how much, you know, a lot of companies would have just probably lawyered up and hid behind that. They stepped right up to the front, to the plate, got the checkbook out, and started helping folks out. And they're also being very helpful in expediting these plaintiff claims and trying to get these folks their settlements as quickly as possible. And to that degree, they're also, they've hired a consultant, now, he's not the developer, he's just a consultant who's done numerous developments and assisted, and he's brought a lot to the table too, because he's worked in developments where entire communities have been wiped out by tornadoes, and he understands the importance of, you know, as Councilmember Tavallaro stated, it's a marathon, not a sprint, and you got to do it and do it right. As we talked to him about some of the streamlining process and some of the things that are going to happen, we also talked about the existing cleanup effort. I did have a call this morning with Brian Shinon, the OES Director for Siskiyou County. He is hoping that we will have everything completed by February 2nd, I believe he said, here. You know, weather is a factor, as we all know, it's hard to go out and clean a lot with 70 mile an hour winds. But he has assured me they're going to remove all the debris, all the cars, all the old propane tanks, all that's going to go. I think what they've been doing is shuttling that Tetra Tech crew back and forth between the McKinney Fire, the Mountain Fire, and here, because it's the same contractor doing all the cleanups, and they're still waiting to get back some of the soil samples to see if they have to scrape lower than the six inches that they've already done, so, but that process is going to take a little while. Another meeting we had was in regards to forming an underground utility district. I think this is a great opportunity at this time to do that. We've got one, I won't say who, utility provider, we have three utility providers, we have a power company, a phone company, and a cable company. So, and one of them has called me a couple of times and said, we're ready to string those wires up, and I'm like, no, you're not. So, anyway, because that's the easy way of doing it, and we're not looking for the easy way, we want to do it right, and by burying all three of those utilities at the same time, it's aesthetically, I had mentioned in a meeting, I had bought a house when I was the City Manager in Auburn, in downtown Auburn, and it was built in 1905, and I had a 360 view of power lines and phone lines all the way around my house, and I hated it. And so, I think for the Lincoln Heights survivors and the folks that are going to be rebuilding, they're going to love the fact that they don't have to worry about seeing those ugly lines obstructing their view of the mountain, so. But this consultant, Larry, had brought up some very good points in regards to making sure and holding the utility providers accountable to not put in just cheap stuff, making sure that we're getting good fiber, good lines put in, and not just cutting a bunch of corners. The great thing, at this point, it looks like Pacific Power has some mitigation money, some fire mitigation money. So, it's, we're not going to have to use any of our, was it Rural 20?
Really?
Rural 20 money, we may, we may actually be able to pay for the whole thing, or Pacific Power will, when they dig the trenches and put the lines in through their fire mitigation, because that helps them by not having power lines swinging with 80 mile an hour winds, starting fires. So, that's something that is going to be very beneficial, but we're going to have to declare that a underground utility district at some point coming up here pretty soon, so that can get started. And last but not least, we also had a meeting with some of the Long Term Recovery Group folks on, yesterday, at the Presbyterian Church, former Mayor Pro Tim, Stacy Green was there as well, and talking about, you know, some of the challenges ahead with some of the key folks and leaders within the Lincoln Heights addition, about what's going to happen, the processes. A lot of the discussion started talking about, you know, manufactured homes versus, you know, stick homes that are built. And I think there's a lot of folks that think, well, you know, a manufactured house, they can just go to Medford, stick one on some wheels, bring it up here, drop it, and they're ready to go. It doesn't happen that way. And I'm sure if you put a truth serum in Palm Harbor and those guys, they'll tell you that there's probably a waiting list and everything else to get those manufactured homes built. Just because they have them on the showroom parking lot, doesn't mean that they're, you know, ready to be dropped. So, there's some other things that have to be done besides all of that, so, but we are going to work, you know, very quickly but thoroughly, and making sure everything is done right the first time, you know. My dad used to say, you know, measure twice, cut once, and that's what we want to do here. So, we don't want to just jump into this thing. I wish I'd listened to that advice more often in my life, because I've spent a lot of trips to Lowe's and Solano's, because I've gotten too big of a hurry. So, but that's some of the things in regards to the rebuild of Lincoln Heights. And I think, like I said, those are some of the highlights I can, you know, talk about at this point, and, but I think this city and this community is definitely moving in the right direction and getting Lincoln Heights rebuilt. And last but not least, I've got something that I found, so, if you look up, so what I did is, I made this little meme, so when my friends and family back in Oklahoma call, I just text them this image. We're okay, yeah, but kids are having a great time in weed, so, anyway. So, feel free to steal it and send it to your friends, like, I don't know how many calls, I don't know about you guys, that have family away from here, but they all think that we're like what's going on in the southern part, they all think that we're underwater and.
Okay, if I want to steal it, how do I get it?
I'll text it to you, because I created it, so.
I don't know, I know anybody that lives in weed that owns an umbrella.
I don't.
Why would you own an umbrella here?
I have one in my truck.
When you go out of town.
He's in Portland.
Where it doesn't blow 80 miles an hour. So, anyway, that's just a little tongue-in-cheek. I'm very thankful, like I said, for our public safety folks, fire, police, Public Works. We had an unfortunate event yesterday, as we discussed, we had a tree, a pretty substantial, how many feet do you think that thing was, Chris, 30, 40 feet? And I don't know if it was a, was it a fir? Yeah, I think so. A spruce. And I have never seen anything like that in my life, where the thing was literally heaving up. And then once we found out that those have very shallow roots, especially John and Sandy, for some reason, they would like, you know, to have some safety in their offices. It was mesmerizing, I will tell you that, but I was very concerned, so our guys in Public Works, where Johnny on the spot, got out there, and that thing was gone in like less than an hour, and it was pretty impressive. We're exempt, so, anyway, but it was, it was a little scary, because I kept thinking, that thing could go any second, and we've seen pictures all over the state of these trees doing the same thing, constant rain, saturation, big winds, boom, there goes the tree. And we've even had some around town do that too, so, anyway, big thanks to those guys, it's a team effort in getting all these things done, so. And with that, that's all I have to report at this time.
I would like to add briefly on those meetings is that one of the other parts that we alluded to at that meeting was forming a steering construction committee.
Yes.
That committee will, and we're going to modify our Long Term Recovery Group to kind of adapt to that. Those discussions will be tomorrow, but it's in order to establish a stronger link with the recovery group, having a vision for the neighborhood, and linking that in with the city, and how the city reacts to the project coordination part of this thing.
Absolutely, and looking at potentially bringing on some sort of project manager as well. And one of the points that was brought up, that Larry had brought up, is you need a group of folks that where, if a builder or, you know, or somebody comes out there and they're having issues, they need somebody to call immediately, and having that group, that essential steering committee governance group, to be ready to help out quickly and respond quickly, is going to be crucial.
And that's also ties in with the signings issue. I mean, getting communication, I think part of the calls that people have been receiving is kind of the lack of information, the lack of information is there, but it's hard to find.
It is.
And it needs to be simpler, because, one, everybody's stressed out, so it makes it even more difficult, so, again, I think with the help of Larry Young and that group, they've given us a little bit of a pattern to follow, so that's been a help, at least from the recovery group's standpoint, so.
Setting together a footprint.
Well, I guess we're done for the night. Can we ride this puppy?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.